All right, well, good evening and welcome to our December workshop. Tonight is Thursday, December 1st, 2022. It is 5:30 PM and we are in the central building, second floor conference room. And before we begin, I just wanted to wish a happy end to trimester to everyone that is celebrating. I don't know. My kids are celebrating, but tonight we have our staff spotlight is Savannah Zipple. I'm super happy that you're finally able to come. And of course, we have our audit presentation and then we're going to review board goals tonight, too. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Huthsbyth and you can kind of introduce and get things going.
Yeah, well, because of the timing of how things worked out this fall in terms of when, when paperwork came in such, we have a chance to talk to Savannah before they went on the trip, but we have an excellent opportunity here for her to just take a few minutes with us and share how things went on the trip with her and the kids that went. And always an excellent experience for our students and just such great work that she does in her department and really, really well renowned in our region and area for the work she does with our kids. So a great opportunity for her to speak tonight on behalf of what she does.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over.
All right, would, can I present from here? Would you like me up there or?
Wherever you're comfortable.
All right, it sounds good. So we attended the National FFA Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana. We went on the 25th through the 29th. We left at 3:00 AM, so we, your kids were very tired on the bus. We travel as a region, so we go with Bell Plain, United South Central, Albert Lee, Owatonna, Mankato. We all go as a group, which is really nice because then you have the support of other advisors there, too, as well. We toured a few places on the way down. We toured at Fair Oaks Farm. Fair Oaks is one of the largest dairy and swine producing farms in the United States. Fair Oaks was really fun. We just toured the swine facility this time around, but we got to take a peek into their fair wing pens. You can see the kids, because of biosecurity, you're not able to walk through the barn, but they have a really great educational setup where you can peek into the pens and see every stage of operation. You'll see the photo on the left-hand side. They have a lot of educational exhibits. They are ultrasounding a pig right now. It's a fake pig, but they are ultrasounding. We also got the opportunity to tour Ozark Fisheries. It's one of the largest goldfish farms in the United States and they produce goldfish and koi for pet stores around the country. So this is always a fun tour. I've been on this one a few times. Kids, majority of them, this was their first time being here. A lot of goldfish, they're able to see the crayfish. They even had a snapping turtle for us. We're able to see the ponds. They talk about marketing. They actually ship their goldfish through the mail, so they show us their whole system and how they oxygenate the eggs. So that was always a fun trip and they let us stick our hands in the tanks. They said, "Have fun." So we went to our opening session, so there's about 65,000 registered members and guests. We were kind of up in the nosebleeds for this one. We had our guest speaker who was Tamika Catching. She is an NBA player who is also deaf, did a really, really amazing keynote speech. We also got to, of course, go to the Indianapolis Raceway. The Indianapolis Raceway, this year we were not able to go onto the tracks itself because they're actually testing cars out. In the past years, we've been able to go on the bus and actually go around the track, but we could actually hear the cars and see the cars going around. You'll see the girls are kissing the bricks. That's what the winners do when they win the Indianapolis Raceway. They have the original bricks. It used to be called the Brickyard. So they got the chance to kiss the bricks and walk around and they also have an automotive museum in there as well. We got to hang out and go to a Mickey Guyton, Russell Dickerson concert, which was really fun. The kids really enjoy it. They enjoyed being out of official dress for a while. They love the corduroy jackets, but after a while, it's nice to change. So we had a lot of fun with that. And then we got the chance to go around the Expo and Convention Center. So the Expo itself has everyone from Tractor Supply and Pioneer Seeds and Culvers, and they have educational exhibits set up for kids and fun things for them to do all throughout the exhibit. So they have demonstrations on plasma cutting. They have, I think they had carpool karaoke in one of them. Culvers gives out free ice cream all day, every day. So it's a lot of fun, but it's a chance to work with industry professionals and talk with them. And then they also, I don't have a great photo of it, but they also have one of the largest college fairs. So they're able to see all the agricultural departments from across the country and talk to professors from them there as well. All right, that's a little bit about our trip. We had a lot of fun. It was really good. Thank you guys for approving the trip and yeah, I think the girls had a good experience.
Questions?
Yeah, questions.
What grade levels of the, of the, of the girls that went?
Nine through 12.
Nine through 12, okay.
I'm sure the answer is yes, but you have a chance to meet, I mean, this is nationwide, so you meet people throughout the nation.
Yes, so one of the activities I do with the kids when they're down there is I actually give them a list of all the states plus Puerto Rico and the Virgin Islands. And because of the FFA jackets having the names on the back, their challenge is to get a signature from every person from every state and region. And I still have graduates that talk about it, that it was one of their favorite things to do because they got Snapchats from people across the country and they got to talk with people all around.
Did I see that accurately? 65,000?
It's a lot of people. I don't think people understand that this is one of the largest youth conventions in the country. There is a lot of people. We, we take over Indianapolis for a week. I mean, and when I say we take over, every restaurant is filled with blue jackets.
I suppose it does make it tough to go to certain places, though.
It does. You just expect that there's going to be about at least a half hour wait for food. So you just got to plan accordingly. I brought breakfast with the girls and then we had breakfast at the hotel. So we at least had that for us and then we did a chapter meal. So usually the, there's food in the convention center and everywhere they can eat, but then we try to at least do one sit-down meal together and talk as a group.
So when do they start going Indianapolis? As I know, I went to the national convention when I was in high school and I was in Kansas City.
Yes, so Kansas City, I think, was the first place that they had convention at. And then it moved to Kentucky for a while. And then Indianapolis got the bid and Indianapolis, they just did the bid again. It's, think about a Super Bowl bid. I mean, you got to think of how much income this is generating with 65,000 people. So Indianapolis received the bid again this year. And it makes sense because it's where the National FFA Headquarters are held. And I really like it, too, just from an advisor perspective because the Expo and Career Center and everything is in one area. So just keeping track of kids and checking in with them. And then also when we go to the stadium for convention, it's right across the street. So it makes it really, really nice. Any other questions?
No, it looks like it was a really great trip. Thank you for sharing and all the pictures were really fun.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, then we'll move on to our audit presentation.
Yeah, Elizabeth, do you want to prep up Craig here and then Craig, you can take it away.
Absolutely. I'd like to introduce Craig Copenhagen. He is here with Clifton Larson Allen. We have worked with Clifton Larson Allen for as long as I've been with Wasika Public Schools and prior to that, ownership has changed, but same great company. Fabulous individuals to work with. And Craig is here to present our, it's draft right now. We will present the final financials to you at December 15th meeting, but he is here to discuss all of the preliminary information from our 2122 audits. So Craig, whenever you're ready, feel free to share your screen and we'll go through the presentation.
All right, sounds good. Let me get this pulled up. Does that look like it's coming through? Should be coming through soon. Got it? All right, very good. Well, good evening, everybody. I'm Craig Copenhagen. I'm your, the principal on your audit, have been for a little while. I haven't actually presented to this group for a little while, though. Had some of my peers have done it for a few years, so it's good to be back with you again. Have good results to go over with you for the 2022 audit. So the audit opinion will be a clean opinion, meaning there's no, no exceptions or qualifications. So we're comfortable with the numbers that Elizabeth and company produced. Had good results. Internal control-wise, I just have the one finding that you've seen other years. So Elizabeth produces the numbers and gets us the, the records and everything to go along with the audit. And then that takes up in the statements about five pages. And then to that five pages, we add about 100 more pages of verbiage to it and disclosures to explain everything and disclose everything needed for accounting principles. So that's what the finding is about. That's the only comment we have again this year for this audit. And that's been consistent with other years, too. So if, if that's the only finding that you have, that means you have a very clean audit. We do some statutory testing or testing for compliance with certain, a subset of Minnesota statutes, and that's as directed and required by the State Audit Bureau's office. Good results there, no findings. Wasika Public Schools is large enough that you have enough federal program dollars, federal funding going through that you need what we call the annual single audit. And this is specific to just federal testing of compliance on federal funding. So you get quite a bit of several different, several different federal programs. We audited two of those programs for 2022, the Child Nutrition Program and then the Essor Gear Program. Good compliance results on that, no findings. Something new and exciting for all of us in accounting is the lease accounting standard. That was new or changed for the 2022 audit. That took effect, effective July 1 of '21, the start of your 2022 fiscal year. So that is reflected in your audited statements. And then we have new things, new standards coming up in each of the next three fiscal years. So just keeping the, keeping the train rolling on changes to, to deal with. So the next one for 2023 is called a fancy, fancy term, subscription-based information technology, otherwise known in layman's terms as software. So if you have software agreements that span more than 12 months or extend longer than 12 months, we have some new accounting to do for that. The one thing I'll just point out is that with the, the new standard coming up for next year for the software, as well as the lease standard that we implemented for this current 2022 audit, neither of these standards had or will have really much of an effect on your, like your general fund or any of your fund statements that you use to track your operations on a day-to-day basis. So really, it's just going to affect kind of the annual couple of statements that we add to those with the audit report. So, so at least you don't, you don't have any impacts coming up to a fund level, really, with these changes. So, but nevertheless, new, new fun things to look forward to here. Full Employment Act for accountants, I think, is, is another thing that, that does so. Okay, so talk about some numbers. So we'll start with the general fund. Looking at fund balance, so I'll have a few slides on fund balance. That is just basically financial resources that are left over at the end of the year, on June 30th, that carry forward for future use. So it's kind of the net of your, your revenues in, expenses out, what's left over that we can use in the future. So what we're looking at here is the unrestricted fund balance. So this is kind of the area of fund balance that you really do have discretionary control over. So how much you spend, if you spend it, when you spend it, whatever you decide to use it on. Here in the last three fiscal years, what you're seeing is kind of a budgeted or planned intentional spend down on that unrestricted fund balance. So you're budgeting to draw it down and that is exactly what happened at the end of the day. Still, you're maintaining compliance with your fund balance policy between 15% and 35% of expenditures in unrestricted fund balance. And then the restricted, we have a few, a couple of slides, a couple more slides on restricted areas. So the Department of Education provides a lot of, or several components of restricted funding. And what we're looking at here is just the remaining fund balance on what I'll call classroom or instructional restrictions. And that was holding steady, right at about 1.2, 1.3 million dollars. And then aside from instructional-related restrictions, you have some capital-related restrictions. So operating capital is one of those. This one, you have a, you maintain a five-year capital plan that kind of schedules out projects that you have in mind that you plan on doing. And that is shared with the Department of Education, so they're aware as well. And a year ago in 2021, you had a boiler repair project that ran through here. There was no boiler repair project in 2022. And then you did have an indoor air quality project and that is tracked in a completely different fund, your capital project fund. So not, those expenses came through, not in the general fund. So here you did have an add to fund balance for operating capital and that will carry forward. Some of this, the, the way these projects fall, the timing of them affects your fund balance as well. So usually with capital projects, they're a little more involved. You know, you're dealing sometimes with structural things. So oftentimes, the work is done during the summer months when, you know, students are not in the building. So even here, depending on the start date of a project, since your fiscal year end is June 30, if you start a project in July or August, you know, it hits next year's budget, too. So timing affects this one as well. The next one that we have is again capital related. This is long-term facilities maintenance. And LTFM, there's a 10-year facilities plan that goes along with this. Again, you had the, the bond project that started a few years ago. That was tracked in a completely separate fund, not in the general fund. So you've had a little bit of a build of financial resources here carrying forward. And again, with your 10-year facilities plan, that's something that you look at each summer, fall, usually in the August, September timeframe. And then update your plan and update the Department of Education so they understand what your plan is as well. Food service, shifting gears here, so we're looking at the food service fund. Fund balance increased quite a bit in 2022. This has been a common occurrence across all of our school district audits so far this year. It really is a result of the free meals program, the summer food program that allowed all students to have free, free meals for 2021 and 2022. Those programs or that particular program has higher reimbursement rates per meal served and that has resulted in an add to fund balance here. And it, it was no mystery to the Department of Education either because they saw this trend happening. So for 2022, what they did is they increased your carryover or permitted carryover to six months of expenditures compared to otherwise three months. So they're aware that districts are building a fund balance here and they want the districts to have a careful, thoughtful plan on, on how to use that. Likewise, with food service, community service programs had a much better 2022, not being locked down or limited by COVID restrictions in 2020, 2021. So this has been kind of a common theme that we're seeing as well. It's 2022 is much better for community service programs, being able to be open. Debt service fund balance, this is just the fund that is, accumulates or holds resources to pay, pay your principal or your loan and interest payments on the bonds that you have outstanding. Here, what you have going on or kind of happening is your property owners in your school district are diligent about paying their property taxes and that allows the fund balance to kind of accumulate. You have to actually levy for more than you plan to pay out given year. Up to a certain point in what happens is when your fund balance is getting higher than what the Minnesota Department of Education likes to see it at, they will kind of limit or hold back the revenues coming in there. And that's what happened here, is they're just kind of tapping the brakes and drawing that fund balance back down. So we're shifting gears now to kind of looking at where is the funding coming from? So what the previous slides were talking about is financial resources remaining at the end of the year. The next few slides will just kind of walk through how did we, how did we get there? What were the ins and the outs of our funding? So looking at the general fund again, revenues just under 24.5 million dollars. Largely state control, so common with previous years, that's no, no surprise, I know, but 76% of the general fund revenues are controlled by the state. About 8.7% from federal. Here's where the COVID dollars, the revenues coming in for, for COVID spending, that's where that shows up. It's in that 8.7%. Property taxes or property owners are covering right at about 8%. They're probably right at 8% of the, of the revenues coming in. What's kind of a normal range, I guess, for, for property taxes? I'm used to, accustomed to seeing usually eight to up to 12% is pretty common. So your, your property owners, you're, you're giving them, keeping their property taxes as affordable as, as they can be, I think. So they should appreciate that. General fund expenditures, so where's the money going? So no surprise here, but salaries and benefits and pick up the majority of your expenses, about 74%. Other purchased services, about 17% and goes down from there. That's pretty common. This kind of a distribution is pretty common. And then we're looking at the same expenditures, about 25.8 million dollars in total. Instead of looking at what was spent, we're looking at where is it spent? So I'll just point out a couple of things. So administration is just under 8%. That's very efficient. My, the normal range that we're used to seeing is usually eight to up to 10% is pretty common. So you're being very, very efficient on your administration dollar. And then working clockwise, regular means regular instruction and then working clockwise up to the top of pupil support. This is spending in the classroom or to support the students. So that's about 80%. So said another way, 80 cents on the dollar is going to classrooms and student support. So that's a good percentage. Kind of a trend line. Here, we're just looking at a five-year trend on revenues and expenses, again in the general fund. But as with the fund balance slide, you kind of see how the, where the drawdowns on the unrestricted fund balance are coming from, basically 21, 2020, 2021, 2022. Your expended, expenses are just a little bit higher than revenues, which is what you had planned in your budget to kind of draw down some fund balance. Then the last few slides that I'll share with you is just looking at expense per student. So we're just taking total expense numbers right off of your financial statements and dividing them by the number of students you have enrolled. And just kind of showing you some stats there. You can see the trend lines. The blue bars are Wasika Public Schools. The bars on the right, the red bar, is a comparative, kind of a stat for districts in the state that have between 1,000 and 2,000 students enrolled. And then the bar on the far right is just all, the entire statewide average of all districts. So comparatively, you're spending, again, less on administration than other districts, which is kind of reflected as well in the pie charts we are looking at a few slides ago. Regular instruction, this is regular classroom instruction. It's the largest item on your, in your budget, just over $10 million for 2022 in total. And this, for 2022, also includes some COVID money. So when we were looking at the pie chart, we were looking at, you know, the one pie chart, the section of it had the COVID money coming in. This is where some of it was used, is in regular instruction. The one thing I would just point out, you know, with these kind of comparative benchmarks, they are going to be in, comparability will be affected by COVID dollars because the COVID dollars were pretty, you know, relatively flexible on where they could be spent. And they, they show up in different places, in different districts, depending on how they use them. So it isn't, I would say, not a perfect apples-to-apples comparison all the time. So just keep that in mind. And then the last one I'll share with you is special education instruction. So this is the second largest line item in your budget and that is about 5.6 million dollars for 2022. Here, being, you know, a large, large district or a larger district, you're housing, you know, kind of the higher needs students for your, yourself and kind of the three district area there. So you're not comparative to, you know, the benchmarks in the red and the gray bar on the right necessarily. So doing a good job, kind of controlling the costs as best you can. Special education is kind of, kind of a tricky one sometimes to, to control the costs. It really, really is dependent on, or driven by the needs of the students enrolled. So that can change from year to year. So that is the last slide that I have for you tonight. If you have questions, certainly we can entertain some questions. Otherwise, I will stop talking and turn the meeting back to you.
I, I have a question. You mentioned COVID money. It's coming from federal, right?
Correct, yep.
Eventually, it will stop coming, right?
Correct.
What, what happened then? And maybe it's not a question for you, maybe it's a question for the district?
Right, so then we would have to adjust our budget down by that much expenditure, which we're planning for in our next year's budget because this fiscal year will expend the rest of our COVID money. Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or?
The COVID money is reimbursed money, right? I mean, you don't get a pot of money and go spend it, you go spend it and then you get reimbursed.
Correct.
Correct, you have to spend first, correct.
Yep. And to Craig's point earlier, we did put the majority of our COVID money in the classroom to support students as opposed to buying things. And so that will impact us in our staffing going forward, but we don't have to, we won't have to maintain new equipment and new things that we purchased with that one. with that one-time money, so. I'm not seeing any more questions, yeah.
I think it's, I think it was a really clear presentation and good to know that, as always, that's a clean audit, that's what we want to hear, so.
And as these get finalized, we will obviously give updated information to the board and we'll plan on formally approving the audit here at our regular meeting in December. Thanks, Craig.
All right, very good. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
All right, yeah, and so as Eric said, so at our next meeting on December 15th, we will formally approve the audit for the year, so. But it's nice to have that taken, to have the presentation now and not add something to that next meeting, so.
And as you think about those numbers and you review them as you, over the next two weeks, if you do have questions, please make sure you send them to myself or Elizabeth, so we can, we can work with that. The facility, the finance committee, you know, met with, with Craig prior to this meeting. And if we need to meet again before the next board meeting, we certainly can. The numbers are what they are.
Yep.
And they're positive, which is a great thing. But, but certainly ask questions if you need to. Was one of the, not only is it help make our meeting on December 15th more efficient, but it also does give you some time to reflect on as a board member before you formally vote to.
Do we have access outside of the meeting to the numbers and every, or the audit and everything? Or so we can kind of review it?
We can get you those draft, that draft information. Right now, it's, he's still got the draft stamp on it, of course, but, but we do have them.
Yeah, that might be helpful in case we do want to review it ahead of our December 15th meeting.
Certainly.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so the last item on our agenda was just to review our annual board goals for the year. And just basically a reminder that we do have board goals. But every, every, every month, our superintendent evaluation committee meets to review the superintendent annual goals. And it's just kind of a good self-reflection for our, for us to review our own goals and see if there's things that might spark your memory of what you were hoping to do this year as a board member. And the goal number one, be informed of what is happening throughout the district. And our objective was to receive regular updates from staff during the staff spotlight. So we have been doing that at all of our workshops. And then we've also added the, the director kind of spotlight or director updates at our board meetings. And just a note, I just want to stage to all of you, if there's this particular staff category that you would love to hear from during a workshop, please let us know. So, because it's usually Eric and I like wrecking our brains, like who have we heard from for a while? But we, we would appreciate any input on that, would be great. Community engagement, continue to engage in the facilities updates and be active in buildings and in the community. Attend school events as able, be, you know, represent the district. I think we're all doing that kind of stuff. And then we did have an article in the quarterly newsletter. It missed the printed version, but it is available online. So the newsletter is on, on the website also. Board training, I'm going to confess, this is my area that I have missed out on this year, because I did not feel like doing all the virtual offerings. But I don't know, has anyone else had a chance to do any of the, any board trainings this year? Have we all kind of, I think we're all tired of virtual trainings. But that's something to keep in mind as, I'm, I'm planning to go to phase two for sure at the annual conference. But something to keep in mind as, as opportunities come up.
I think to ask, just like for the staff spotlight, if there's particular topics like curriculum adoption process, we're kind of waiting till the new year here as our, as our board goes into 2023, we can add some of those things as workshop items as well. If there's things you want to learn about that's, in addition to what MSBA or others might offer that we could provide in-house as well.
Well, and even like last month, we kind of had a really deep dive into the financial realities of running a school district and just stuff like that is always really helpful, too. So we do have new board members coming up, so please reach out to them if you're able to and offer support, want to make it a seamless transition as possible, so. And then superintendent support. So Eric, thank you for your weekly updates. I look forward to those. And communications and other than that, I feel like we're on track with that as well, so.
I would agree. The one, the one thing I would add to is particularly as we have some new board members and we think about what 2023 looks like, planning a board retreat could help us to kind of mid-year, kind of assess some of those things, which plug to respond to email, to Caitlin's email. If you are able to go to MSBA conference, leadership conference here in January, that's an excellent opportunity to connect as a board, too, in an informal manner. Last year, I think snow slash illness slash jobs changed who was able to make it. But if you're able to go, you know, the more board members that we are able to have go there, if, we wouldn't have any formal retreat if not everybody could come. But if most could come, it does allow us to work on some things in informal way. But otherwise, we'll be talking about that after the new year here. Thinking about what would be a good time to maybe take a deeper dive into some of the things that we dabble in in our work sessions, but then would I need to like to spend an hour on? Those kind of things. Otherwise, I, I appreciate the support very much as you work on these goals.
Any comments or thoughts on board goals? I feel like we're on track, so.
Do we have like the, the training for the new board members? Is it something that is in a written fashion or, you know, what, what are you planning?
Yep, Eric has plans to meet with both of them. We do have the new member packet that we worked on. So they'll be getting, well, they'll, they'll be in full access to that. And they've both been informed about the phase one training that's virtual as well as at the MSBA conference as well, so.
Right, and we, and once we have our organization meeting in, in January and we have officer positions realigned, we'll also assign a mentor board member for our new board members to help, help them through that initial process of what things are going. Yeah, so I, I met with, I haven't met with Faren yet. I did meet with, with Alyssa and we talked what, what committees are all about and which ones you might want to be interested in. How does that work as you get moving? So at what questions you have to begin with, that sort of thing. So as they get moving forward, we'll have that support for them.
But I don't know, just knowing us as a board, even though we're changing, I know that will, it'll be a night, it'll be a good, a good start to a new, a new board. We have, we have a good, stable system kind of going. I, I think that'll, I think that'll be, will be good, so. Otherwise, yeah, I think just, kind of just keep these in, in mind as we continue through the rest of the year and.
We will do the, we will review my goals, I believe, next meeting.
Yes.
We'll have that conversation as well. And then look, and then in the spring, February, probably, we'll be able to do the mid-year vision card report as well and we'll get right along. It's always something to be accountable for, but that's a good thing.
Spring, February.
Yes.
You like that apt? All right, well, I think that's everything, unless someone wanted to add anything else to our workshop tonight? All right, just a reminder, the next regular board meeting is Thursday, December 15th, and it will have a start time of 6 o'clock PM because it is our annual truth and taxation meeting. And for anyone watching at home, please know that you are welcome to come in person to hear the truth and taxation presentation. But of course, we'll also broadcast it on Facebook, so. All right, that's, that's it, then end of meeting. Thank you.